I'd like to call to order the work session for September 9th, 2019. We are all present. We have two items on the agenda tonight. I'd like to remind council, the staff will be pausing intermittently to answer any questions. So the first discussion comes and comes to us on the consensus on the official name for the recreation campus. Nathan Torres-Parker, Recreation Director, Michael Beato, Recreation Superintendent, to present. We're excited. I think everybody was excited when they read the information for us tonight, so you have the floor.
Super. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we are here to receive direction and hopefully gain consensus on the naming of the recreation campus. Quite a day before us this evening, but before we begin, I would like to ask you to reflect upon your fondest memories spent in parks. Whether these memories were big or small, as a child or adult, with family or friends, with your kids, or maybe even grandkids. I'm sure these memories, as well as the names of these parks, have stuck with you over the years. And along with that, it's no secret that you're Parks and Recreation Director. Parks have played a critical role in my life. You know, some of my fondest memories, growing up as a kid, every Friday, family tradition was family time spent in parks. Every Friday, we would visit the park, we would picnic, and we would partake in activities, games, whether it was throwing a frisbee, or kicking a ball, or playing on a tot lot. And we did that every Friday, growing up. The name of the park we visited was Alta Vista Park. One of my fondest, another one of my fondest memories was a dirt lot that was right around the corner from my house. It was a dirt lot, it was a vacant lot, but there was a sign in the middle of that lot that read "Site of Future Park." And while that sign was up, there were many a sandlot games that took place in that lot. Unfortunately, that sign remained up for years, and it wasn't developed until my late teen years. And while at that time, the park took on an official name, it was still known, and still to this day, known as Future Park by all those that grew up around it. And in fact, you know, I still get invitations today that will have the location listed as Future Park. And that's pretty cool. Twenty-two years this week, I married my wife, Sophia, in a park in downtown Phoenix. And as I was going over the presentation with her this weekend, she put me on the spot and asked, "What was my favorite park?" And I sat back and I thought, and I had to be careful with this answer, but very quickly, of course, it's Heritage Park, because that's where we got married. And she paused, and she said, "Wrong answer. It should be Margaret T. Hans Park, because that's where we actually met a few years earlier." So I went from thumbs up to, you're right, but at any rate, these are, these are all very important memories to me and to many others that, that kind of shape our lives in parks. And ironically, we remember the park names associated with those memories. So you can see the park names are what we associate with throughout life. As we discuss naming of the recreation campus, keep in mind that this is how the community will identify with the space, as they create memories and experiences with their families and friends. So no small task before us this evening, but simply put, a park name should create comfort by making the unknown familiar, providing mutual understanding for residents and for visitors to Goodyear. And that's what's before us this evening. Just a quick project timeline, we are getting closer to that right side, which is the opening of the recreation campus. It feels really good to be progressing through there. We are tonight, before you, asking for consensus on a park name, and then later this evening, we'll ask you for, to take formal action on a park name under the business agenda. So in 2008, guidelines were established for naming a park, and these guidelines are still very relevant today, and they are best practices. Basically, parks can be named after an adjacent street, predominant physical fixtures, features, or adjacencies to the park. Could be named after a subdivision in a park, a significant historical event. There could be a special theme that's selected for the park name. Could also be named after an individual or group that has made tremendous contributions to the community. So our Parks and Recreation Commission took these naming, took the naming framework and developed a process by which they approved. And they wanted to make sure that there was a lot of public input received for coming up with the name of the park. And so we had tremendous outreach, either onsite, using the Tom Band to our recreation programs, we had online surveys. That generated 412 responses that you see here. Of those 412 names, city commission, city cross-departmental team then took the 412 names and reduced it to 11. The cross-departmental city team consisted of members from Economic Development, Digital Communications, the City Manager's Office, as well as Parks and Recreation. And those 11 names are here before you this evening. From there, the Parks and Recreation Commission took these 11 names and were charged with an enormous task of scrubbing the names, deliberating on the names. They spent well over two hours coming up with three names to be recommended to City Council for consideration this evening. The names are supplied here in alphabetical order. They are not in order of preference, but we'll talk through those names right now. And so the hope is this evening that we'll talk through the names and hopefully get consensus on one of these three. Three names that the Commission voted unanimously to bring forward are the Goodyear Recreation Campus, the Oasis Recreation Campus, and Star Mountain Recreation Campus. And before we get started, I'd like to do a little deeper dive into each of those names. And so the Goodyear Recreation Campus sounds and looks very familiar. It was the working title of the project since day one, and it is a great description of what the facility is. When you read the name, you know that there's something there to do regarding recreation in this space. So this name is direct, it's descriptive, and provides the much-needed mutual understanding that we talked about earlier. And that's key when identifying the name. There is, this name being used in the Valley, the Surprise Recreation Campus is an example of that. Does not have the same type of amenities, amenity for amenity, but it is a recreation campus, and it's taken on that name nonetheless. So Goodyear Recreation Campus. Oasis Recreation Campus. In considering this name, it's important to note that an oasis is not just about a body of water. As you can see in the description, an oasis provides refuge and pleasant change. This is exactly what will be found on the campus. This new amenity in Goodyear will provide areas that will revitalize people. It will transport our visitors to a special place, to make memories and to make new acquaintances. So that's Oasis. And in terms of other uses, it's important to note that there are some, some uses of this right here in Goodyear, some local neighborhoods have taken on the name Oasis. Although they're not adjacent to the park, they do exist within Goodyear, and we think it's important for you to know that. And last but not least, again, these are in alphabetical order, Star Mountain Recreation Campus. The name Star Mountain is a nod to the beautiful Austras. And the Austra mountains can be seen so prominently from all angles of the park. If you ask anyone in the Valley, they will tell you that the Valley is known for its beautiful mountain ranges, and we're fortunate to have probably the most beautiful right here in Goodyear. And so that is a play off of that. In terms of examples for Star Mountain, we couldn't find any local. Papa, New Guinea, has a Star Mountain Park. There's a park in Canada, Silver Star Park, and then one in Colorado. So we believe the names before you this evening create comfort by making the unknown familiar and providing mutual understanding for residents and visitors to Goodyear. And so with that, we'd like to have some discussion to see if we can come to consensus on a park name this evening.
So Council, it is consensus, so that doesn't mean a vote. It means just you give me the smile, the nod of the head, whatever you prefer, so that we get to know. So who would like to start the conversation off? All right, Laura?
Thanks, Nathan, for the hard work, and I love the public involvement to get it. When you saw all the names, quite a process to whittle it down. Now, when I looked at the Park and Rec Advisory Commission minutes, there was one name that didn't come forward, and that's the Good Life. Could you explain that?
Correct. Mayor, Councilmember Kano, that is a great question. One of the names was Good Life Recreation Complex, or Good Life Recreation Campus. The Commission really liked that name, and it made their original list. However, at that time, we weren't sure, we thought that there may be some potential trademark issues associated with Good Life, so we had them pick an alternate in its place, just in case that there were some potential conflicts. And we reviewed with our legal team and determined that, that there are some, that there could be future issues associated with, with the name Good Life.
So that was probably my favorite, because it incorporated Goodyear in what we're trying to do and improve our quality of life, and I thought it was a nice combination. So there's always the legalities, I guess.
So out of this?
That's out. I would, if we're making recommendations, I would like to stick with the Goodyear Recreation Campus. I think I just like the clarity when I think about it. It's going to be 86 acres upon completion. That is a significant campus, and I just think that that's a good, solid name for it.
Thanks. Sherry?
Yeah, there's three, and I did, I saw other ones that were very nice, too. So that was a lot of work that, to whittle that down. I like two of them for different reasons. My favorite would be to combine them, but I don't know if that's possible. I like Star Mountain, because I think that does bring in the Austras. I think that's a very nice aesthetic. But I like Goodyear, because if something is done here, it's going to get branded with Goodyear. That's why I said if you put Goodyear-Star Mountain, or Goodyear, you know, then, I, because I really do like Goodyear Recreation Campus for that reason. It's not as pretty as the other one. I like star, pretty, but I think if they're going to, if you're going to have a big tournament there, or something along those lines, then it's going to get branded as Goodyear, and people are going to know where it is and where we are, so I think that's a positive. So those are my two favorite. Like I said, I would have loved to be able to combine them, but that's not an option, that's option D, like, that doesn't exist. So out of those, I think I have to agree with Laura. I think Goodyear probably is the best for branding for us.
Brennan?
Yeah, thank you for, again, to the team for the hard work. I see on the next slide, there was a lot of different choices that you start, that you had to go through. But I kind of like, I do like the branding aspect, I didn't think about that, but I, I'm going to be the opposite of everybody else here. I like Oasis Recreation Campus. I like that one the best, because I think in the future, I'm hoping to have another recreation campus up in Austra somewhere, and that one would be Star, Star Mountain, in my mind. And then I think Goodyear Recreation Campus is, I mean, it's exactly what it is, but I think I like Oasis better. It's not as generic, and it's, it's refreshing. So I like Oasis.
Bill?
Obviously, you cannot start this conversation without a thanks for all the work that not only staff has done, but just even the Parks and Rec Advisory Commission. Huge undertaking. I agree with Laura on the, my top pick would be the Goodyear Recreation Campus. We stuck with that when we did the ballpark, we stuck with that when we did the community park. The very first park we built was Goodyear Community Park. So I gravitate more toward that. Yeah, it's kind of boring, but from a branding perspective, it tells you exactly where you're at. My, can I live with anything else? Yeah, I guess. My only concern about Star Mountain is it's too similar to Star Point, which then makes you wonder, is this in Austra? Is it owned by Austra? You know, it, there's just, it's too similar. And when I saw it, I thought, yeah, you can probably see the Austras from there, and I didn't know what the topography was, whether you could actually see the white tanks from that location either. But overall, I, I'm worried about the confusion when we use, if we use Star. And the Goodyear Recreation Campus just seems to, and maybe, maybe it's your fault, because that was the name that we used for the, for the, we should have given it a code name or something that we used for everything, but I think just overall, that's all, that's all that we've been hearing. So that's kind of where I, where I tend to lean.
Thank you. Wally?
Well, Nathan, as you know, when I moved here in 2000, we didn't have a standalone park department. And I came here as a sitting park commission elected from California with 157,000 people. And I was so concerned, we didn't have a rec center, we didn't really have a community pool, and I harped and harped and harped, and we got a standalone department. I harped and harped and harped that we needed a community input, we needed an advisory council. We got it, and now we're getting this wonderful, wonderful recreation campus. In my community, we have an oasis pool and recreation area where I live. I would really like to see it named Goodyear Recreation because of the identity. It really puts us on the map. And it is going to be a gathering place for all of our families and for all of our events, and I can only imagine the notoriety it's going to bring to this city. I agree with Bill with the Star Mountain. I thought of Star Point immediately when I saw that. When I saw Oasis Recreation Campus, I thought of Romans Oasis, and I thought, well, I don't want to do that. So I loved the Goodyear Recreation Campus, and recreation means a lot of things to a lot of different people. And I think by calling it that, folks will understand there's lots to do there. And I just think it, I think we need to own it as a city, because it will be our premier park, just like the community park is. And thank you for all you did. I don't need to tell you that. I send you emails all the time thanking you and your staff, how wonderful you all are.
So, that's it, Wally. Joe?
As mentioned earlier, I want to thank everybody who's participated in this process to get it to this point, and the public input's important. I, I think of it, once we start getting a lot of events out here, and you're looking at it, and you're going to Google, and you see the name Goodyear Recreation Campus, going to pop right up, easy to get to, I, I think you want that name in there. You know, I don't have heartburn on any of the others, but I think it's important to have Goodyear in there. So my number one choice on here would be the Goodyear Recreation Campus. And again, there's no misnomers of where you're going, or where the event's going to be. The name pops up, and with the mapping way it is, it'll direct you right there to where it goes. So as opposed to putting in probably Star Mountain, and you may get, depending if you don't put the state in there, you may get several other things popping, popping up there as well where you're going. So I'm, I'm in favor of just being direct. I know it may as not as exciting as some of the others, but it tells you what it is, and it tells you where it's located. So to me, it's Goodyear Rec Campus.
Well, I want to thank the person that put the name Georgia Lord up. That was very kind, but unrealistic.
You see that?
And so I do want to send that thank you out. But just to review this, last week, I was sitting at GPEC, and they were reviewing all the different cities and their accomplishments in the company, and we had three Goodyear companies up there. What a better name to have than Goodyear. It doesn't have to refer to the blimp or the tire company. It's just a good city. And so I felt about the other names, Oasis is, throughout the world, there's a lot of oases with palm trees, and it's, you know, Hawaiian music, and it's own oasis. Star Mountain, I felt it was too much similar to Australia Mountain. And I want the people in that middle area to really know that this is, this is an accomplishment for that district, because they've had nothing, and we've promised it for so long. So I was really pleased when I said, saw the name Goodyear. So I think you have the senses. But before you go, we'd like to wish you happy anniversary with a round of applause.
Oh, yeah. Happy anniversary.
In this day and age, it's an accomplishment. How long have you been married?
I will be sure to share that.
How long have you been married?
Twenty-two years this week.
Wow. That's, that's a great accomplishment. So please, meet her to your wife and tell her congratulations.
My wife, Sophia.
Should I say for her tolerance, or should I just say you?
Probably more for the tolerance.
All right.
Spotting her.
Oh.
So.
So, so the floor is back to you.
Thank you. So I believe we have consensus for Goodyear Recreation Campus. I will tell you that, that you're in good company, that that name was generated the most interest from the public at large. And so ironically, what is a working title to us, when we asked the public what to name this facility, that name, and it was, you couldn't see your, it was blind submission, so you couldn't see what others were submitting, that name came up at the top of the list for a number of entries for Goodyear Recreation Campus.
That's great. All right. What's left now?
We have our consensus. I'll be back later this evening for an action item.
We'll go on to the second, then, item on. Thank you, gentlemen, very much. Go back and praise your team, because it was a lot of work getting up to this point, and now it's going to be even more work.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay. The second item is for Council to discuss and provide direction on the proposed city code amendments regarding vaping regulations and restriction in the city. We have Chief Keier, yeah, yeah, Chief of Police Jerry Keier, and Donna Bronski, Assistant Attorney, to present. We're very anxious to, oh, you have more than that, too. Okay.
So good evening, Mayor and Council. We're honored to be here tonight to have a discussion on vaping. Back in June, Council provided direction to staff to prepare amendments for our city code, which expand the current smoking regulations to include vaping, and to combine smoking and vaping prohibitions and penalties. So we know that vaping's been in the news a lot lately. Just last week, the CDC put out a warning recommending people not use e-cigarette products until they have completed their investigation, because nationwide, there was four deaths and 450 people sick, which they associate with vaping. nationwide, there was four deaths and 450 people sick, which they associate with vaping. Also, Michigan was the first state in the United States, or first state in the United States to ban the cella flavored vaping products last week. So vaping has been all over the news. I'm sure we've all seen the stories. That's just a couple of examples. But for tonight's presentation, Deputy Chief Justin Hughes is gonna provide you with a high-level overview on vaping. It'll be a refresher to the yellow paper that you received a few months ago. In addition, he'll provide you with some updated statistics about what we're seeing so far this year in our schools. Also with us tonight is Donna Bronski from our City Attorney's Office. Donna will provide you with the amendments to our city code that are being proposed tonight based upon your request. And lastly, we'll be happy to entertain any questions that you may have. And we'd be very interested in hearing your direction on these proposed amendments to our city code. Justin?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I would like to start by first saying, if there are any terms that I use during this presentation that don't make sense, please stop me, and I'll be happy to explain.
Appreciate that.
I tried to use as much plain English as possible, but please, at any time, please stop, and I will explain. So the first thing I'd like to do is explain what the term vaping means. Vaping is essentially the act of inhaling vapor produced by any type of electronic cigarette, also known as an e-cigarette. Currently, there are over 460 e-cigarette brands on the market. As you can see pictured on the slide, vaping devices come in all shapes and sizes. They can resemble a myriad of devices, to include thumb drives, inhalers, lipstick tubes, and even sticks of gum. The liquid that becomes vaporized upon inhaling it through the e-cigarette is referred to as e-liquid, e-juice, or vape juice. The liquid can contain various ingredients and chemicals, and there's little research on the effects of these chemicals when inhaled. The liquid can also be infused with nicotine. And again, though there are no long-term studies as it relates to the health risks of vaping, just within the past few weeks, the CDC has identified more than 450 cases in 33 different states that have attributed lung illness to vaping. In most cases, patients involved reported vaping nicotine or THC. Flavored liquid and nicotine are not the only chemicals that can be inhaled through an e-cigarette. THC, the chemical in marijuana that is responsible for the drug's psychological effects, can also be infused in the e-liquid. The fact is, what we are seeing in our schools is not just our youth inhaling a flavored mist, but in many cases, it's nicotine or THC. The aerosol emitted from e-cigarettes can contain more than 60 different chemicals. The major concern is how vaping is impacting our youth. A national survey conducted by the National Institute of Health showed a 78% increase of e-cigarette use among high school students, and a 48% increase amongst middle school students. National health officials, including the U.S. Surgeon General, the Secretary of Health and Human Services, and the FDA Commissioner, all agree that e-cigarette use among teens in Arizona is at epidemic levels. Almost two in five high school seniors admit to vaping and do so on a regular basis. If we look at the vape-related incidents at the three high schools in Goodyear for the last school year, our school resource officers responded to 42 separate incidents at Millennium High School, 54 incidents at Desert Edge, and 51 incidents at Australia Foothills. We are only a few weeks into the school year, and there has already been seven vape-related incidents at our local high schools. The results of a survey conducted by the National Institute of Health showed that 62% of the students surveyed believed the liquid in e-cigarettes was only a flavored mist. So more than half of the vape users have no clue of what they are actually ingesting. Only 31% of the students surveyed were aware nicotine and marijuana could be ingested while vaping. The picture on this slide is just one example of how vaping liquids, liquids are packaged. As you can see, the manufacturers make the packaging and flavors enticing to our youth. E-cigarette companies have gone as far as offering scholarship opportunities to students worth up to $5,000 to entice and attract youth to their products. There is current Arizona revised statute under Title 13 that makes it illegal for a minor to purchase or possess vaping products, and it is illegal to supply or sell these products to a minor. Under Title 36, it is illegal to possess tobacco products on school grounds. The Goodyear schools have taken issue with the vaping epidemic and are issuing long-term suspensions when it comes to students in possession of vaping materials and/or tobacco. Even if the student is only vaping e-juice with no nicotine or other illegal substance, the student still receives a suspension for being in possession of a prohibited item on campus. In instances when a student is in possession of a vaping material and THC, both the Goodyear schools and the Goodyear Police Department have taken a zero tolerance approach. Beyond long-term suspension or possible expulsion, the Goodyear Police Department does arrest these offenders and submits felony charges to the Maricopa County Attorney's Office. In all cases in which a student is caught with vaping materials on school grounds, the contraband is seized. Without the presence of an illegal drug, possession of tobacco, a possession of a tobacco product by a minor is only a petty offense. So at this time, I'd like to turn the presentation over to legal services.
Thank you, Justin. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Again, my name is Donna Bronski from the City Attorney's Office. What I'm, my portion of the presentation is to talk about the proposed regulations to address vaping in the community as well as in, in the schools. We're bringing for your consideration amendments to the city code. Currently, the city code prohibits smoking, but not vaping, in city regulations, I mean, in city buildings and in city vehicles. Also, in public places of employment and in restaurants. What we are proposing, next slide, please, what we are proposing is a variety of changes to the code. With your permission, I'll go through and briefly summarize them. First, we are proposing amendments to both the two existing sections that deal with smoking and vaping, with smoking in the city code. Currently, smoking and vaping, smoking is prohibited in city enclosed vehicles and in city enclosed facilities. What we're proposing is a modification of those regulations that merely adds vaping and add some definitions that will bring it all into conformance, so that neither smoking nor vaping would be allowed in city facilities or vehicles. The second existing code provision, next slide, please, is, modifies the current public non-smoking regulations. As you probably know, currently, smoking's prohibited in businesses and restaurants, and within 25 feet of the entrances to those, or 10 feet of their other, their other side or rear entrances. What we are planning to do is, once again, amend that, those current provisions, and just add vaping to the definition, so that neither vaping nor smoking is allowed in these same situations. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, now we're to the next slide, regulation of smoking and vaping in city parks. So in response to the request from council, we are proposing three new sections in areas of prohibiting smoke, smoking and vaping. The first one is regulation of smoking and vaping in city parks and trails. The park, the park rules right now prohibit smoking, and they're updating them. But the proposal that we have is to add it to the city code that would prohibit both smoking and vaping in all city parks, trails, public facility, public recreation facilities. And then that we would recommend adding this, a violation of this section is being a petty offense. It's reminiscent of some of the regulations from state law. The second proposed amendment we have is, is regulation of sale of tobacco, oh, next slide, please, regulation of sale of tobacco products and smoking devices prohibiting to people under the age of 21. It's currently 18. This is a new regulation making it unlawful to sell tobacco products, including vaping products or smoking devices to persons under the age of 21. One of, probably the main provision of this is that the sellers have to check IDs before they sell either smoking or vaping products, to make sure that the sale is in fact to someone who's under the age of 21. Violation of this provision would be a misdemeanor. Then the last smoking-related amendment we're recommending has to do with prohibiting smoking and vaping at schools. As the Assistant Chief mentioned, it is already a violation of state law to do that, but, but, but we're recommending bringing that also into a city code provision. And what we would, based on the state law, smoking and vaping would prohibited at schools and school-related events. So if the students are at any other events in the city of Goodyear, smoking and vaping would be prohibited. This would apply to all ca, all grades kindergarten through 12, and all public charter and private schools. So all our children would be protected. Violation of this section would be a petty offense with increasing penalties for repeat offenders. And then finally, finally, this is a technical correction that we're recommending. The, the city code currently has a provision that in Title 1, under the general penalty provisions, that, that any violation of a misdemeanor may also be treated as a civil offense at the discretion of the enforcing officer. And this could be a variety of people at the city. And we're recommending a change so that this would also apply to petty offenses, because if you'll notice, a lot of these are petty offenses, according to our recommendation. And that way, in the appropriate case, it could be charged as a civil violation, especially when you're dealing with the children and first offenses. The next steps. Currently, this ordinance, the proposed ordinance that's before you, is scheduled for your consideration on September 23rd at the council meeting. And if that is passed, the plan is to have a public outreach meeting to educate the general public and the, and the business owners that sell smoking and vaping products as to the new law. And then third, the recommendation is a, is a 90-day recreational, recreational, educational provision, period. So for 90 days, people would not be cited for violations of these provisions. The idea being, it would be an opportunity when people are found violating the new regulations to, just to educate them and let them know that things have changed, and there's some new rules that they need to follow. Next slide. It's just, do you have any questions, or do you have any direction for us?
All right. Elsmen Fazila?
If I understand you correctly, the penalties for selling cigarettes to minors or selling anybody under 21 is the same would be vaping. Is that your proposal?
Yes.
Okay. What is the penalty to selling to minors? You, you're saying a misdemeanor or whatever. Is, is there a fine involved? Is it a ticket? How does that work if you catch a business selling this vaping equipment, which will be same as cigarettes, to, to somebody under 21?
Well, it would be a misdemeanor, as opposed to a petty offense. And exactly the range is dependent on what the court finally decides. The maximum penalties for a misdemeanor are up to $2,500 per violation, per day of violation, and up to six months in jail.
Is there anything that we can put on there that makes it a little more stringent as, as opposed to the courts, or is that kinda crossing that boundary? What I'm getting at is, I'd like to make the penalty significant enough to really discourage people, because these kids gotta be getting it somewhere, okay? And you, in my mind, you want that penalty for this vaping to such an extent, they don't even think about selling it to somebody who's under this age. Is there anything we can do to kinda raise that a little bit, make it a little tougher?
I'm gonna punt this over to the city attorney.
Thank you, Donna. And, and I, just, I'd like to thank Donna. She's been here for about nine months, and this is her last week, and that's probably why she's feeling real comfortable punting this over to me. I appreciate all the help she's given us, and she's going back into retirement, but she's kinda helped us get over the hump recently. You could impose minimums. I would say that the City Attorney's Office of the Prosecutor would certainly take any offense involving retailers seriously. And we typically prefer to have discretion in addressing cases on individual basics, because there are different circumstances involved with different cases. So there is a range of penalties. It can be quite significant, because the $2,500, I believe the surcharge on top of that these days is 86%. So you take the $2,500, and you add 86% more in fees. So it can get very significant. It is council discretion. We could write it with some minimum penalties. That is a statutory method we could use. My recommendation is to give the prosecutors some discretion in resolving these cases, which they exercise on a daily basis with all the other cases in front of them.
I know, but I personally, because this seems to be something that's really starting to get out of control, and these kids are gonna be getting it from somewhere. And I would prefer a high minimum to really discourage these people from selling this to these kids. I just read on the news the other day where you've got somebody in the intensive care with some lung disease as a result, and they don't know what's all in there. Now, I agree the education program is real important, that we've gotta get into the schools, and we gotta explain to them the health risk of what's going on here, to the least of the part that we know. But I, I like to make it, I like to see a minimum and a high minimum, so that we really discourage this. Because I'd like to nip this, you know, as quick as possible, so we're saving our kids out there. And that's what I'm, I'm more concerned is, where are they getting it from, you know? And unfortunately, some of them aren't following and probably don't think it's a big deal. So that's where the education's gotta come into play. But the ones selling them, you know, they, they should take better responsibility for doing that. So that's just my own two cents. I would, I would love to see. And I, I know they work with it, and I hate to tie it on the courts, but this is something I got no tolerance for, is selling this stuff to the kids.
Gary?
I, I wanna thank you all for the presentation, all the information here. I've got two high school students that go to Australia. Last year, my daughter, like, there's certain bathrooms we don't wanna go in. And you know, you gotta think also about the health effects, the secondhand smoke. I can also tell you, these kids, even the ones that don't do it, they know where the kids are getting it from, right here in Goodyear. I'm not gonna say it in open meeting, but they're like, it's that store that's selling it. They know, you know, exactly where and who's getting it and how they're getting it. So I agree with Joe. It sounds like you were looking to make it a class one misdemeanor. I would like some sort of tiered penalties, because these businesses know where the kids are. They're by the places the kids hang out, and they're selling them to the kids. Like, if they're going to get coffee, their kids know what's around there, and the ones that want it can go get it. I, I will support this. This is not as strong as I want it. With everything that's going on, the secondhand smoke dangers, I don't think we even know how bad this is going to be, you know, in 50 years. Because that's like cigarettes. Nobody knew for like 30 years. I have problems with the advertising to the young people. I have problems with the, the scented, the, the flavor oils. I think that's outside our range, but I think we should go to our legislatures as part of this, and, and the league, Arizona League of Cities, and we should, you know, work with them to try to get our legislatures to, like what Michigan did, to ban that, to give our police officers the tools. I don't think, from what we discussed previously, we have that authority, is my understanding, to do that. If we did, I would support it much stronger. This is going to kill a whole gener, there's gonna be so many lung problems with these kids using this. They have no clue how bad this is. And then the ones doing THC, they gave an, at our orientation for our kids, the police department did present for vaping. But you gotta keep up on these kids, and you gotta keep informing the parents, because the parents don't know, you know, it might be a thumb drive this day, but the kids that are gonna use it, it's gonna switch to something else the next day. They're gonna stay one step ahead of where they are. And these retailers know that. And there's no good reason why they're selling something you can vape in a lipstick container unless you know that it's not going to be something good. I mean, otherwise, why not have it out in the open? So I would like to see stronger, definitely what Joe said. I would like to see us, as a council, move forward and try to work with our legislature to get some statewide and the other cities, because this is ridiculous. Downtown, on one of the big buildings downtown, there's a huge, literally probably bigger than this room, banner for vaping, for advertising. You can't do that for cigarettes. And the fact you can do that for vaping, and this stuff is, this stuff's nasty. I've walked by people, and I've smelled it, and it's, you don't know what's in that stuff. And you don't know what people are smelling. So I appreciate your hard work, and I think we're making a great first step. And I would like to see us, you know, move forward in other ways to try to get other cities involved, because I also, a realist here, I also know whatever we do, if Avondale doesn't do it, if Talison doesn't do it, if El Mirage, these, they're going to go. doesn't do it, if Tolason doesn't do it, if El Mirage, these, they're going to go. These kids are mobile, they have cars, they will go somewhere else and get it. So we do need to make this a statewide effort, like the texting, and we need to get our legislatures on board. So, I do support this, what we have, I would like to see it stronger, if we can make what Joe said stronger, a tiered response, so the first time you do it, it might be a little bit lower, the second time, and the third time max them out. Because there can also be jail time for a, yeah.
There can be, there can be up to six months in jail for a class one misdemeanor, up to three years probation.
Yes.
Those are tools in the toolbox, typically, this is probably a fine offense.
Yeah, but if you keep doing it, like if they kept doing it, not caring for like six or seven times, then our judge would have, that's what I want, Joe, they can put these people in jail if they seriously do not want to follow the law. So I, I support everything you've done, so thank you very much.
Sherry, may I just clear a point with you? So are you saying wait till the legislature gets to?
Oh, no, 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 we passed ours, but I think there needs to be more.
I just want to clear that one up.
I think there needs to be an additional step, probably beyond what we have the ability to do to solve this problem. So no, I think this is great, this is a great first step and we need to take it before we get overridden by the legislature, so we need to get ours in place.
Thank you for that. Next, Wally?
So Chief, what is the penalty for a youngster when they're caught? I know they get suspended from school. What, what happens to them then? What do they do? Do the parents get called in? I mean?
They do, and it, and it also depends on what they're inhaling. So again, if they're just inhaling the flavored liquid, it's still a prohibited item on campus, they are suspended anywhere from three to five days. The parents are called, the school resource officer is called, we do seize that item. Now, if we're looking at nicotine or THC, nicotine is typically the same, they, they do get a long-term suspension. When it comes to THC, that's where the game changes a little bit, they are arrested and we, that's a felony offense. So we do submit charges to the county attorney's office for that.
Okay. I know when the principal of Desert Edge reached out to me about this vaping problem and I called Chief, they were having 12 to 15 incidents a week. And they were bringing the kids in and losing all that instructional time because they were so busy trying to mitigate the vaping. And like Sherry said, most children who are not involved in this vaping, they don't want to go to the bathrooms because they're vaping in the girls bathroom and the boys bathroom. I almost wish the schools could put minors in the bathrooms and catch the kids that way. But we have got to stop it because we've got to save our kids. The kids aren't going to save themselves. So I'm for however strict we can make it, and I don't care if we're the forefront and we do all of this even more than the other cities, maybe the other cities will follow suit. But someone's got to be brave enough to step out and say, no more. And we attended a vaping seminar at the League of Cities and we had some legislators up there who kept passing the buck because they'd say we couldn't get consensus and we couldn't get this and we couldn't get that. And her parting shot was, don't let the tobacco companies run your town and kill your kids. So, that's passing the buck, I know, but we need to either outlaw advertising for the vaping in Goodyear, whatever it takes. And we may need to do more than just what we're doing. But we have got to do something because it is epidemic. And I'd like to know our city is being proactive for our kids.
Laura?
Thank you. You know, this is such an interesting topic because I, it wasn't ever on my radar until I started attending the monthly police management meetings and then beginning to hear how much time they were spending at the schools and how big of an issue this was. And so my initial interest was educational, well, I, I appreciate the SROs talking to the parents, but as a grandparent, it's like, I didn't even know about it. I mean, I wouldn't have, have, have got it. And I think about churches and scouts and all kinds of other community entities that probably aren't even fully aware of the impact of vaping and so, but then, just more and more, we're, we're hearing about the hospitalizations and deaths and things like that. I mean, now it's, seems to have gotten on the forefront as a public health crisis. And I have a question about the THC, don't, do you have to submit that to DPS for testing and does that take a long time? I mean, if, if you suspect THC, is that, is that like a month-long process to find out or?
It, it can be. As you all know, we have one crime lab in the state, we use the Department of Public Safety. And yes, anytime we make an arrest where we have an illegal substance such as THC, we can do a presumptive test to show that it is THC, but to actually charge that offense, that does have to be submitted to the crime lab for analysis. That can take anywhere from two months to eight months.
Yikes.
You know, we're kind of at the mercy, because that is a state entity which all the smaller agencies do send, you know, any evidence we have for analysis. So that can take a while.
Okay. Well, that, that's helpful to know and it is also interesting to me that we're hearing from the CDC. Today I read an article from the New England Journal of Medicine and they were talking about the, the health hazards of vaping even before you add CBD or THC. And because there's so many unknown elements and compounds on it and that, until you assess what's in it, it's going to be very hard to prevent these vaping induced respiratory injuries. I'm now seeing vaping on materials advertised on TV, I'm hearing it on the radio. It feels like we've lost so much ground from the anti-smoking movement, which, you know, happened in my heyday, back when I smoked. I mean, I understand kids don't even touch cigarettes, but these are a lot stronger and a lot, a lot worse. So I would have to say, one of the, the challenges was, with this, for me initially, was moving from 18 to 21. And I had to really give that some thought, like Wally said, I was a part of that vaping session at the league and that was something they talked about. I mean, I, as a parent, I sent three 17-year-old kids into the military and so I respect, you know, that adult status of, of somebody. However, it, it seems that the ones who are 18, the seniors, are now have a pretty good direct distribution system where they're able to get it and, and to give it to the other kids. I asked my 13-year-old grandson, what does he know about vaping? And he goes through a K through eight school in Peoria, and he said, yeah, kids vape. And so it's getting now into the elementary schools. And so I am, am for that separation of age to, in an attempt to keep it out of the schools or at least slow it down.
Brandon?
Yes, thank you also for bringing all the information as well. I've got a question about some of the rules or the proposed law changes. So, we talk about sellers must check photo ideas, IDs, is that going to be the same level that we already check alcohol and things as well? Or is it more so? Then, I mean?
Yes, there won't be, it's, it's not like some of the other regulations where there needs to be a log or any of that kept, just someone needs to check and make sure that what they're, that the person that they're selling to is actually under the age of 21.
Okay. I just know, I, I mean, by alcohol, they say like if you look over 35, you don't have to check or something? I don't know if that's a law. I don't know.
I think, I could be wrong, but I think that's a policy, not a, not a law.
Okay. I was just curious how that, just, I just make sure we're at least equal, equal with other things that are already out there. And then, also make sure also the other new one here too that you're proposing is that, so if I may, so we don't already regulate school grounds, so right now, if a parent is smoking in their car, going to pick up their kids, then this new law, then we would, we could give them a petty offense for it.
That's correct.
Okay. That's one difference, okay. And then, and the first offense could be up to $2,500, right? If someone's selling, selling to minors?
Yes, technically.
Okay. And then, and then I think you kind of touched on it as well, how do you know, because I don't know, I've never even really seen the vaping stuff, but how do you know if a child has, if the liquid that they're smoking is nicotine or, or THC or anything? Did you say is that there's a quick test you can do in the beginning and then validate it with the crime lab?
There is, there is a presumptive test. Obviously, the first thing that the SROs are going to do is, once the student is caught, it's, typically it's going to be by school staff. Our SROs have done a great job this school year, they have gone to every high school and during orientation week, all did a presentation for the students, for the staff and for parents. So typically, if a child at the school is caught with it, they will call the school resource officer, an interview will take place. More often than not, some of these students who have the THC in a cartridge likely are going to have more of that product with them. But yes, you can tell by smell, our officers are trained to, to detect the odor, they can do a presumptive test, and then that's when we would, we would file charges on it.
Okay. I was just curious, I didn't know how easy that was to do that.
And just as a follow-up to that, one of the things that we've put in the definitions is that, that a device that delivers nicotine or other nicotine-related products, whether it's the device or portions of the device, you can't even have those. So if you have just the devices, those can be seized and so you wouldn't even have to test to see if it has nicotine or any other substance on it.
Okay. And that'd be for under 21 related schools for that? That wouldn't be the parent?
Well, that's actually anyone that has smoking devices on school grounds.
Okay. So that's, also includes the parent that's in the parking lot for the game or the, whatever it is as well? If we see that in their car, then you could also?
Correct.
Which would be a different, different than it is today? So if you see that in their car?
Yes.
It'd be a petty, penny offense, a petty offense for that one, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. I'm just, I just want to clarify what it really looks like in, in, in action going forward as well. So, okay. So yeah, yeah, so make sure everything is equal to, I don't know, I think it's bad, but I also make sure we're not going over like alcohol or cigarette as well. I think it's on the same playing field as those, so.
I'm sorry, I can't hear what you're saying.
I, I think they're on the same playing field. I think, I don't want to over-regulate, over like alcohol, make it, or something else that's out there that we already regulate. I don't know if I need to have, I, I think this is okay, that's what I'm getting at. So, that's all, I just want to make sure we're not, I don't know, I think it's, I think it's an issue, I just want to make sure it's on par, the same as the other type of things that we already regulate out there. So, and then, okay. I think that's it then. No, I think it'll be, I think it would be good. I hope this is a bridging strategy till legislator, legislators get on board as well. So, but yeah. Okay, thank you for the answers. Thank you.
Bill?
Thanks as well for, for everything. I'm appreciative of the fact that not much changed since we first talked about this before, before tonight, so it keeps it simple. The only comment that I really have about the overall concept is in agreement with, with Joe and Sherry, that we really need to, we need to go after the source. We need to touch the user as well, but it needs to hurt the source. And then I think we'll, we'll get ahead of it. We can't control what the legislature is going to do, we've been running, I don't want to say, you know, we just, we can't wait for them and we need to do everything that we can here locally. We were one of the first communities to pass the no smoking in the early 2000s and will be one of the first to pass the vaping changes, but I really think it's important for us to go after the sources and then let the rest of the chips fall where they may with the legislature. So thank you very much for all your efforts.
My turn? Are you done?
I want to thank council. I've been after this for quite some time. And I think what happens when you've had a, a child that has gotten involved, whether it's marijuana, whatever the drug is, and your whole family goes through something, then it's almost too late because the process that you go through trying to cure your children is very difficult. And so this alarmed me. And again, I will tell you what alarms me is, we keep producing something that makes somebody feel better. So they don't have to, they don't have to experience what sadness is and what, and so we have a society now that just wants to prompt everything up, so everybody's going to smile and be happy and, and be cool. And so, just talk to us, because we do have a vaping, is it one vaping shop we have? How many do we have in Goodyear?
Gosh.
Nobody knows.
I believe we have about nine in the city right now.
Very good. So can you just tell us how are, because we do have an age limit on certain things and there is some rule out there. So tell us how, as a city, that we're going to monitor that and yet still have respect for the, I, I don't have any respect for the vaping part, but if they have, you know, they have the cigar shop and the cigarette shop and it's hard to control that. So can you tell us what your action is on that or what, how you monitor that or would monitor that? I'm putting you in a tough position here publicly, so I know that. This is a tough subject, so.
No, thank you, Mayor. You know, I think it comes down to, one, our education, but two, our enforcement. And we have done undercover details in these shops in Goodyear recently. And we have made arrests, we have made arrests of, of clerks in these stores and we will continue to do that and be very proactive.
Thank you very much. I just wanted the public to hear that, all right? Any other questions? I think you have consensus from this group.
Mayor, if I may, yes, just to recap what we heard tonight.
Okay, great.
So it's desired to move forward with the amendments to the ordinance. However, we will look at, there seems to be a consensus with maybe increasing the minimum penalties for the sellers, maybe a tiered penalty type system, especially for repeat offenders. So is that correct? Yes. Okay, thank you.
Sounds good. Any, any comment on that?
Is, is the, is the offense on the business owners or on the clerk that sells the product? If it ratchets up, is it to the same clerk that sells it or is it the penalty to the owners of the company that hired the clerk? Or is it both or, I'm just curious?
Yeah, so criminal charges would be on the clerk that sell it.
No more questions? Well, thank you very much and thank you, Justin, and thank you, Chief. It's just great to have this information, we appreciate it. Well, we, we'll save all the information items to be addressed at our six o'clock meeting and no further business, this meeting is adjourned.